...of July the seventeenth, would the clerk please read the roll?
Mr. Amrane?
Here.
Mr. DeLeong?
Here.
Mr. Farrar?
Here.
Mr. Kuhar?
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer? Did I call Ms. Rosenberg? Did I call Ms. Rosenberg?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Sedoti?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. Wallach?
Here.
I have not heard from Ms. Schaefer, so I don't know what the outcome of that is. All right, opening remarks, Mr. Kuhar.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that participated in making the Kent Heritage Festival such a great day in the city of Kent. And also, you know, as we look through our community on a daily basis, that the streets of Kent are starting to come alive. And, you know, Kent's becoming a nice place to visit, a nice place to enjoy all the things we have to offer, as you've heard that from a lot of people recently. And so it just, I guess, there's a lot of people doing a lot of hard work and did a good job. With that being said, I'd like you all, if you're physically able, to stand, pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. All the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kuhar, I need a motion for the regular council meeting and the hearing.
Okay. I'd like to move to the approval of the minutes of the June nineteenth council meeting and the public hearing of July third.
Second. Second. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, under communication, audience communication, would the court please read who signed up to speak?
First was Christopher Myers.
Just a minute, Chris. While the law does not require counsel to provide time for public comment, we have historically invited the public to make comment, and we appreciate their input. This is the time when residents and others can comment on matters that concern them. However, if we will not engage in debate, and as President of Council, I reserve the right to end any public communication that is disruptive, embarrassment, harassing, or otherwise objectionable, we ask that you come to the podium, speak your name and your address clearly for the record. You will have a limit of three minutes.
My name is Christopher Myers, I live at 220 East Elm Street. I will embarrass Mr. Ruller tonight, I'm sure, but I will not speak anything that's not absolutely true. I'm going to read Amendment One, United States Constitution. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. Kent may be a fine place to live, but not if you value free speech, because if you value free speech, and you exercise it here in front of this council, you can get a police report written against you. Now, I was protesting on the corner of DePister and Haymaker Parkway one day, and Mr. Ruller turned me in. He said that, he said to council that Mr. Myers is protesting on the corner, blah, blah, blah. But he didn't even know what I was protesting. He didn't know. Now, what is that? He didn't know. Now, I used the word asinine here, and I was written up in the minutes as being vulgar. Mr. Turner used the word asinine, and he wasn't written up in the minutes as being vulgar.
Correct, Mr. Turner was corrected also.
He was corrected, he was not written as being vulgar, and there's a big difference.
All right, continue, sir.
There is a big difference. Heidi isn't here, so I'll leave her, oh yeah, Heidi's here. Heidi, in the police report against me, said that she feels targeted, but she doesn't say how she feels targeted. She says she thinks that I might show up at her door sometime, like I have a history of showing up at somebody's door? Come on, give me a break. You people need to think and value freedom of speech, because it's here, and it's here to stay, no matter what you do or say. Thank you.
Thank you. Further?
Josh?
Thank you.
Okay. Daniel Ott.
Name and address for the record, sir, you have three minutes.
I'm Daniel Ott, nineteen seventy, Cleveland-Massal Road, Bath, Ohio. Two thousand sixteen, I was arrested in Kent during an eviction. I talked, I tried to work this out through the Law Department, but they refused to communicate. In fact, last month, I was hung up on by a female that represented to me that, on the telephone, that she was the law director. I can't verify her identity, but that's what she said on a recorded phone call. I'm here to collect thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. During the two-day trial that I had to take off work, I was found not guilty. The court imposed a fine of twenty-five dollars for me to pay the public offenders' office. I said, "No big deal, I'm not going to get arrested in Kent again, so I'm not paying it." So, the court then ordered me to pay it, so then I refused. They put a block on my driver's license. I don't have any vehicles in my name, up until last month. I go and get plates for my vehicle, and I can't, because the city of Kent has a block on my license. I'm restricted. So, I had to end up paying that. And I have communication from two thousand seventeen, June two thousand seventeen, where the city of Kent, by and through Sandy Lance, the legal secretary, sent me a release. And this release is right here, where the city of Kent was going to pay me thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. I refused to sign it, because I was going to take the city of Kent, because the officers were arrogant, they violated multiple problems, and the jury just thought they were morons. And I refused to sign it, and I wanted ten thousand dollars, or I was taking it to federal court. Well, I really let it go, because it was thirty-two dollars, the officers know their, you know, they did wrong, and they violated my constitutional rights, and along with this gentleman, freedom of speech, because I told, why I got arrested is because I told the person I was evicting, "We can do this the easy way or the hard way." She called the police. I was arrested. Okay? Jury, after two days, thought that was the biggest waste of time. Well, now I'm still reliving this, thirty-two dollars and fifty cents, it's, I can retaliate against the city and get thirty-two dollars, you know, thirty-two dollars and fifty cents by backing over a curb, or turfing your lawn, or anybody can do that. I'm not into, I'm not interested in doing that. I want thirty-two dollars and fifty cents, and I'll sign this release. Okay? So, you folks have till Friday at noon to bring me a check, wherever I am, for thirty-two dollars and fifty cents, or I will have so many public records requests for the, from the Service Department, from the Police Department, anything that you buy, anything that you write down on public paper, I'll request a copy of it. So, I'll get my thirty-two cents, my thirty-two dollars and fifty cents somehow.
In half a minute, sir.
Okay. Somehow, but it's thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. That's what I want. By Friday at noon, or, these officers will be sued, I have a background check on them, I will sue them personally. The Law Department says I'm beyond the two years. I can still sue them. I can still sue them. I could, I could pay the fee, it'll go on their credit report, and it'll be on there. It might be dismissed, but I can waste their time, like they wasted mine, for thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. The Law Department knows how to get ahold of me. If you want copies of these records, I can leave them with you, because Sandy apparently couldn't find them in her stash.
Your time's up, sir. Thank you.
Does anybody want this?
You can leave it with the clerk, they'll make copies.
Further?
Linda Preziosi.
Name and address, and if you are in this part of the country.
Linda Preziosi, ten seventeen South Daniel Way, San Jose, California. Greetings, I just wanted to stop in and say hi. When I come to town, a magnet draws me to this room. I think that's what happened after twenty-six and a half years of sitting where Dawn is sitting. Just wanted to say hi, I wanted to see what you guys are up to. The town looks great. The humidity and the rain, not so much, but will pass. And I was brainstorming with Bridget over the VFW property, and what can be done with that, since I do books for a certain VFW that's been harassing me since I've got into town. So, I got some brainstorming with her, and I just wanted to say it's good to see you all, and it's even better to be sitting over there, instead of over here. Because you know, I could really get up and leave if I wanted to, but I'm not going to. And it's always a pleasure to know that Mr. Myers is still around, so, you know. It's a lot of fun for you folks. Anyway, town's looking great, I see some changes. Police station looks wonderful. Hotel is a wonderful creation, not so sure about your proposed Wyndham, I think that'll be a little interesting, but you guys are doing good. Keep it up.
Thanks for the visit.
Nice seeing you all.
Oh, I'll be glad, you know that, Jerry.
Like a bad penny, essentially.
Stacy Samira.
Name and address for the record, please, no, give those to the clerk. We do too, but.
All right. Stacy Samira, I am here representing Kent Psychological Associates, one ninety Curry Hall Parkway. I'm also here on behalf of the National Association of Social Workers. I serve on the Board of Directors for the Ohio Chapter. I'm an independently licensed social worker, bachelor's in psychology from Kent State University, master in science from Case Western Reserve. I know that you guys are considering the bill on banning conversion therapy for minors. What I have passing around is, for your reading pleasure, just a few pages that are excerpts from a U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Report, SAMSA. It was a report issued back in two thousand fifteen, it's a seventy-six page report with twelve pages of references, and I only highlighted a few pages. I know you do not have time to read before you vote, if you vote tonight. But, I know this council, I know the individual members, I know the council as a whole. I gave you a ward a couple of years ago on behalf of NASW over there, in that pile on that bookshelf there. So, I already have a feeling that if you do vote tonight, it will be yes. So, the handout I gave you is more to just to reassure you, so that you can have a good night's sleep tonight, that you're on the right side of science and the right side of child health. I'm sure you're already familiar with the research that shows that conversion therapy simply doesn't work, it is not evidence-based, research has shown it does not work, so therefore it's fraudulent. But it's not just that it is not evidence-based, it's also very cruel, a lot of research has shown that children that are forced to go through conversion therapy or reparative therapy are basically, if an adult brings a child to me and says, "My kid thinks they're gay, make them straight," that kind of therapy. And a lot of that therapy involves, and I mean this literally, torture. So, it has been shown to not just be ineffective, but also very cruel, it would constitute child abuse in a lot of cases. And, I know a lot of people probably think it doesn't happen still in Ohio, much less than Kent, but it does. So, you could obviously save lives by preventing a child from going through conversion therapy. But when you vote to protect child health in this way, it's not just the kids that you would prevent conversion therapy, that you could save those lives. It's also the message you're sending to other kids, to other kids that are closeted, to other kids that their parents would never even consider sending them to a therapist. But when a kid is reading the Record Courier and hears about the vote that you guys make, they're going to know that they are valued, because I'm sure you guys are also familiar with, and you might have other speakers show, that children that identify as LGBTQ have suicide rates four times higher than the general population. And research has shown that any, any movement towards acceptance reduces the suicide risk. So, I think that's all I wanted to say. And the full report, seventy-six pages, there's no way I was going to print that all out for you, you can find it, samsa.gov. And so, it takes a lot for the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services to issue a report like this. So, it's not just SAMSA, it's not just the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, it's National Association of Social Workers American, Counseling Association, National Association of School Psychologists. Myriad national bodies encourage local bans like this, statewide bans, but please don't wait for a statewide ban in Ohio, it's not going to happen in the next couple of years. Sharlita Taveras is, I don't know how many legislative sessions she has introduced, and it never gets out of committee. So, please don't wait for the state, protect Kent's kids now. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Giovanni Santiago.
Name and address for the record, and try and eliminate it, three minutes.
Giovanni Santiago, I live at five seven four Faust Avenue in Akron. I'm here representing Equality Ohio, and also my own organization, Metta Center Inc., which I started to assist transgender and gender non-conforming youth. It's based in Akron on Britton Road. Just wanted to talk a little bit about the conversion therapy ban that you guys are talking about and going to be voting on hopefully soon. Thank you for considering this, banning this dangerous practice of conversion therapy on Kent youth. Kent stands ready to join Lakewood, Cincinnati, Toledo, Columbus, Dayton, Athens, in this critical step to protect children. It is important that this body take action, because the state licensing board cannot. So, it's very important that the cities do it, because just like she said, the state is not. So, it's important for us to do it at this local level, to give those children that hope that they need. Organizations such as American Counseling Association, American Psychological Association, National Association of School Psychologists, and various others are condemning this, and they're showing that the practice of conversion therapy, especially on minors, is extremely harmful, not only to them, but also to their families. The overwhelming medical consensus is that being lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender is not a disease. Same-gender sexual orientation and variations in gender identity and expression are part of the normal spectrum of human diversity. I like to say that again, it's a part of the normal spectrum of human diversity. It's important that we normalize people being individuals on whatever spectrum that they're on. Critically, it is important to acknowledge that many parents who send their children to conversion therapy are attempting to do the correct thing. They don't know any better, they don't know how harmful it is, because apparently there's not enough research about that. And I say that sarcastically, because there's plenty research about that. It is impossible to change a young person's gender or sexual orientation, that's just simply lies. So, those lies have a negative consequence to our young people. It shows them that they're invalidated, that they don't mean anything, and it's dehumanizing. So, we want to work to change that. So, at this point in time, those who offer this type of therapy do so quietly. It is impossible to know how common this is in Kent. However, this ordinance is clear message to a bad actor determined to hang a shingle and swindle families that they are unwelcome to do so. Further, it has helped to educate parents of dangers of seeking this type of practice, even outside of the city. So, hopefully, it'll let them know that, you know, it's not welcome here, and let's not go any else and do it. As a community, we like to protect our youth. We don't let them buy nicotine or alcohol, we regulate their driving to make it a stricter degree, and we do this because we value keeping them safe, keeping them monitored, and keeping them loved, so that they can enter adulthood and do the same for the next generation. That's the best way to pay it forward.
You've got half a minute, sir.
Yes, sir. The measure is prudent, and in this political climate, it is so timely. I also would like to thank the council members for their thoughtful consideration, and we'll leave you with these final words of Lila Alcorn. Lila was a transgender child in Kings Mills, Ohio, who completed suicide in December of two thousand fourteen. She scheduled a blog post to be her last and to post automatically after the fact. In it, she expressed how her parents didn't approve of her, and employed some of their techniques we're talking about here tonight, to help change Lila's gender. Her words follow. "My death needs to mean something. My death needs to be counted in the number of transgender people who commit suicide this year. I want someone to look at that number and say, 'Wow, that's messed up. Fix it. Fix society, please.'" Thank you for taking this important step to fix society here in Kent, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Sean Cleland.
Name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name's Sean Cleland, I reside at twelve sixty-two Carroll Drive, Kent. I'm a resident of Kent about the last fourteen, fifteen years. I'm originally a transplant from Northwest Ohio. I kind of came here to go to school and kind of got stuck. But, I've come to love this town, I've come to love this community. I work as an Ohio Certified Peer Recovery Supporter for Coleman Professional Services. I'm not here to represent them, I'm just here to represent myself as a citizen of the community, as a psychology student, as a person in recovery, that you've heard enough about the affected, you're going to hear hopefully more from the affected demographic that this ordinance will help, and I'm not here to speak for them, I'm just here to speak as a concerned citizen, as an ally, as a family member and a friend of that community that there's enough banality going around in this nation right now, and if even just taking a symbolic stance to say that you would outright ban a form of torture that's not clinically, it's not clinically based, it's not evidence-based, if you can't exercise a conscious will to avoid that, I would be very disappointed, and I hope the council will do the right thing tonight, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Further?
MJ Eckhaus.
Name and address for the record, three minutes.
My name's MJ Eckhaus, my address is fourteen thirty-three Cedar Street in Kent. I'd like to echo the gratitude I've heard for you all considering the conversion therapy ban ordinance tonight. I want to acknowledge that when we hear things, we hear terms thrown around like torture when talking about conversion therapy. If you're not familiar with the details and the specific experiences from people who have been through conversion therapy, hearing it described as torture might sound exaggerated and overblown, and since this is a political sort of issue, I can understand that. But I'd like to read from this New York Times article published last year. The author had gone through conversion therapy when he was in middle school, and this is fairly intense or graphic, just so you know. "For over two years, I sat on a couch and endured emotionally painful sessions with a counselor. I was told that my faith community rejected my sexuality, that I was the abomination we had heard about in Sunday School, that I was the only gay person in the world, that it was inevitable I would get HIV and AIDS. But it didn't stop. It didn't stop with these hurtful talk therapy sessions. The therapist ordered me bound to a table to have ice, heat, and electricity applied to my body. I was forced to watch clips on a television of gay men holding hands, hugging, and having sex. I was supposed to associate those images with the pain I was feeling, to once and for all turn into a straight boy. In the end, it didn't work, I would say that it did, just to make the pain go away." So, for reference, that's the sort of thing we're talking about here. I understand concerns about the ordinance being overbroad and accidentally including people who are not affiliated with any sort of practice like this, and I share that to assure you that that will not be the case. People don't accidentally stumble into treating a person like that, treating a child like that. This ordinance really is a measure against child abuse, and it's also a way for the city of Kent to stand up and demonstrate through action that we are an inclusive, forward-thinking, welcoming community. And I know this council believes that and has acted on that before. I trust that you'll act on that again, and I thank you.
Liz Regula.
Name and address, and three minutes.
Liz Regula, fourteen thirty-three Cedar Street, here in Kent. Boy, this brings back memories. Two years ago, nearly to the day, city council here in Kent was considering a nondiscrimination ordinance to protect LGBTQ individuals here within the city of Kent. It will be exactly two years that that, ago that that passed next week, and I still remember how proud I was of our city for standing up and being the nineteenth city in Ohio to say, "Yeah, you're welcome here. Doesn't matter who you are, who you love, you are welcome to live, work, and do business in the city." You're here tonight considering a ban on conversion therapy, a form of child abuse and torture that you've heard described. This does not take away parents' rights. Parents who are bound and determined to turn their child straight can go outside of the city of Kent. I don't know about you, but that's not a huge ask. All we're saying is, here, within these city limits, you're not going to do that. It's not taking away businesses' rights. If you want to practice that, if you want to do what MJ just described, go outside of the city limits. In a time and a place where it is easy to hear real descriptions and graphic photos of kids undergoing torture here in our nation on a regular basis, stepping up and saying, "Here, you're protected. Here, that's not going to happen to you," might seem like a little thing. Kent as a city is not that large, even though it's the center of my heart, just like I know it is for a lot of people in this room. But it's stepping up and saying, "Here, you're safe. Here, you, as a kid, can be who you are. And you, as a parent, have to step up and do your job and accept that kid, or go outside the city limits to try and change that." Tonight's vote, hopefully, I believe you guys will do what's right, and will become the seventh city in the state of Ohio to protect LGBTQ kids in this way. And I realize that this will not, in the words of Lila Alcorn, "Fix society," but it's a small step, and for those kids who are hiding in the closet for fear that this might happen to them, that small step is a huge leap. It's a weight off their chest, because they have a little bit less to be worried about. They have a little bit less to fear. And if they have a little bit less to fear, they have a little bit more reason to live. I want to thank you guys for doing what's right in the past, I want to thank you ahead of time for doing what's right tonight, and I want to thank you guys for helping to make the city of Kent a city that we are all proud of, and I think is a leader in the state for showing how we treat people well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further?
That's it.
Written communications.
The Health Board meeting minutes for May fourteenth, May and June statistical reports, and the agenda for July ninth received July third, two thousand nineteen. The Planning Commission staff report and meeting agenda for July sixteenth received July eighth, two thousand nineteen. Sustainability Commission meeting agenda for July third, two thousand nineteen, and the minutes from June third received June twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen. Then after publication, we also received revised Planning Commission agenda for that July sixteenth meeting. We received that on July eleventh. We received the Park and Recreation Board packet for the July eighteenth meeting. On July fourteenth, we received it. And then we received a new liquor license request from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for Kent Tacos LOC Doing Business as Bario. And Chief Lee had returned no objections to that request.
Check. Turn with no objections. Garrett has it. Second.
And then that is...
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Then that's it.
All right, thank you. City manager, report, Mr. Amrane.
I'd like to move items one through ten on the city manager's report.
Second.
Second, but when, is there any discussion on that? Saying none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Is there further, Mr. Rull?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, we're getting into standing committees, Committee of the Whole, there's nothing. Committee Development, Mr. Kuhar, there's nothing. Mr. DeLeong?
actions recommended.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. With the court read draft number 201970, entitled only.
Draft 201970, a resolution adopting the tax budget of the city of Kent, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2020, submitting the same to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Garrett. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Resolution 201970 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number 201971 entitled only.
Draft 201971, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of $2,400,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide funds to pay costs of constructing a safety center and to retire outstanding notes that were previously issued for that purpose and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second. Call the roll for suspension.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Ordinance 201971 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number 201972 entitled only.
Draft 201972, an ordinance authorizing the city of Kent to submit three funding applications totaling $920,000 and to execute the subsequent agreements with the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, and to accept the grant if awarded with corresponding appropriation of funds and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Garrett. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Ordinance 201972 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number 201973 entitled only.
Draft 201973, an ordinance authorizing the city of Kent Fire Department to apply for an Ohio Bureau of Workers Comp Safety Intervention Grant for firefighters' exposure to environmental elements, FEEG, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Mike. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ordinance 201974 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number 201975 entitled only.
Draft 201975, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of $990,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide funds to pay a portion of the costs of reconstructing Alley 5, Erie Street, and DePicer Street, and otherwise improving nearby streets, including by relocation of public utilities, landscaping, and installing parking payment devices, street signage, and site improvements, and to retire outstanding notes that were previously issued for that purpose and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Garrett. Please call the roll for suspension.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ordnance 201975 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number 201976 entitled only.
Draft 201976, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of $255,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide funds to pay costs of renovating and expand, and expanding the city's main fire station, including acquisition of necessary real estate, and to retire outstanding notes that were previously issued for that purpose and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Jack. Please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Jack. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordnance 201976 passes.
Is there further, Mr. DeLeon?
That is all.
Health and Safety Committee, Mr. Amrin?
Yes, I'd like to move the committee meeting minutes of July 3rd and the two actions recommended.
Second.
Second by John Kuhar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. With the court read draft number 201977 entitled only.
Draft 201977, ordinance adopting Chapter 723, quote, "sexual orientation or gender identity change efforts," end quote, of the codified ordinances of the city of Kent, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Jack. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Mr. Farrar?
I would just like to make the comment that, one, thanks to everybody that provided so much information to council about this so we could become better informed about it. And I'd also just like to make the personal comment that it's been made, it's a small step, and it's a small sign, but I don't think there's anything small about it. I think it's Kent being at the forefront of social responsibility, and I think it's a super big deal, and I'm super proud to support it, and I hope that what this, what I think is a big deal becomes even bigger and more people and more cities adopt it also, so.
Heidi?
Yeah, I just want to sort of add to what Garrett said. We are welcoming in diverse city, and I welcome any opportunities that we have to show that, to demonstrate that. But we're also an education city, and I think this goes far in educating others about the negative effects of this type of therapy. It puts it into the news, and it also educates parents who might think this is innocuous, but now they see, oh, there's opposition to this, and also as well as giving a sign of welcome to people that are LGBTQ or questioning, yes.
Jack?
Yeah, just very simply, morally, it's the right thing to do, so I will support it.
John? You know, at first, I was opposed to the action, but considering that, you know, maybe we were doing something wrong by violating the parents' rights. But child abuse definitely overcomes anybody's rights to do anything, so I'll support it. Further? Please call the roll.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ordnance 201977 passes.
Okay, thank you. Court read draft number 201978 entitled only.
Draft 201978, an ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designated to approve and execute an amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the city of Kent, Ohio, and the Kent City Board of Education regarding the School Resource Officer Program, extending this agreement until May 29th, 2020, and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Second by Garrett. Please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.